Okay, all right, we're ready to get started. Start with introductions. My name is Kelly Sheen, District Manager of the Trinity County Resource Conservation District, and Trinity County Collaborative Group Facilitator, and I'll pass to my right.
Good morning, everyone. Jim Spear, Trinity County Collaborative Co-Facilitator with Kelly.
Diana Sheen, I'm an interested public. Good morning.
Very shame, Joe.
Good morning, everyone. Tara Jones, District Ranger for the South Fork and Trinity River Management Units.
Great, and we'll go to Zoom. Ross and Susan.
Here, we're here.
We're public members of the collaborative.
Susan Millino, Todd Johnson.
Hey, good morning, Todd Johnson. I'm sitting in for Sarah Acreage, District Ranger for the National Recreation Area Management Unit. She's out of town today, so covering for her.
Thanks for joining us.
Also gonna have Joseph Steubendeck, Joseph Steubendeck, our Recreation Officer for the NRA is gonna be sitting in for part of it, too. He's out of the room right now.
Thanks, Todd. That's great. Thanks for being here with us this morning. Carol.
You are muted, Carol.
Uh oh, something went clicked and we didn't hear you.
Got it.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, Carol Tholl, Collaborative Member and kind of North Lake person.
Kinda, kinda North Lake person. Thanks, Carol. Monique.
Good morning. My name is Monique Ray, Partnership Coordinator for the Shasta Trinity. Thank you.
Thanks, Monique. Kristen.
Yes, Kristen Lark, District Ranger, Mad River.
Thanks for joining us, Kristen. Ren.
Ren Winter with Trinity River Lumber.
All right, thanks for joining us, Ren. Mike.
Morning, everybody. Mike Wilson, Alert, California.
One of our presenters. Thanks, Mike, for joining us this morning. Chris.
Hi, this is Chris Cole. I'm the District Conservationist for the Natural Resource Conservation Service.
Thanks for joining us, Chris. Jennifer.
Good morning. Jennifer Motta, Field Manager, Reading, BLM.
Morning, Jennifer. Larry.
Hey, Larry Glass was safe, and this morning I'm also sitting in for Jerry Cousins.
Okay, proxy for Jerry Cousins. Thank you, Larry. Let's see, Arnold.
Arnold, I'm here, but I'm on the phones. For some reason, the computer audio isn't working, but I can see.
Okay, very good, Arnold. Yeah, I was gonna ask about the call-in, but thanks for the clarification, and thanks for joining us this morning. Tom.
There we go. Tom Waltz, Collaborative Member. That's about it.
Thanks, Tom. And Bob, I think is the last of us, but not least, I hope. Bob Moore, Collaborative Member. Absolutely not least, Bob. Thank you for joining.
And still unable to get make, get on the internet at all for some reason.
Hmm, okay. All right, sorry for that. Okay, and I think that is all of us, and are there any other?
Did you do Ren?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Ren Winter?
Yep, yep. Yep, we got Ren. I think that's, is there anybody else that I missed? I don't think I got everybody.
I think we got them all.
Okay, great. Any other proxies besides Jerry Cousins or Larry Glass for Jerry Cousins? Okay, hearing none. Moving on. I'll hand off to Jim.
All right, Kelly, thank you. Well, good morning, everyone, once again. Beautiful day out there. Good way to start a Friday and great to see everyone here, and thank you for your participation. Happy St. Patrick's Day Eve. Yeah, so without further ado, we'll do an agenda check. Any time-sensitive items that we need to kind of be aware of, or move things around, or add or subtract. Let's see, any hands? Collective memory minutes. Anybody have any comments, questions about our minutes from last meeting, January?
Yeah, this is Tom. I think it's an important correction is that in numerous places where I think Kara was talking about basal area and canopy cover, in the notes it's written as basillary, and I don't think anybody 10 years from now would know what they were talking about if they read that.
All right, thank you, Tom. Kind of a typo, huh?
Yeah. Do you happen to know what that is, Tom?
It was during, yeah, it was during, I think, Kara's discussion about why the Bowerman. Yeah, the field trip didn't, or the language of the field trip in some cases isn't, doesn't match up with the white paper and that they're trying, but they need to have, or they keep coming back the idea that they need to have numbers that need to, that was the discussion anyway. I don't remember what page it was on or whatever.
The bottom of five. Okay, great. Okay, thanks for that clarification, Tom.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else on the minutes?
There'll be a few type of things, names I'll square away with you before I leave, if that works. Like, you must do a recording because it said Tara talks too much and then laughs, so I'm like, well, you're gonna get a lot. In the future.
This is a bit of a minutes thing, yes, so we'll discuss that further in a little bit. Okay, public input. Any public slits this morning? All right, seeing none? All right, very good. We're gonna move on to our follow-up items, so just again, as a reminder, it was requested of Kelly and I that we attempt to kind of pull out from last meeting any action items or follow-up items that that developed during the prior meeting and kind of put those right up front to start our meetings, just to make sure those don't get lost in the weeds. So we've got three items here, kind of follow-up from previous meetings, so we'll start with this Caltrans tree mortality fuels reduction. It's been around for a while, so Kelly, I don't know if we have an update on that.
I wasn't able to, I wasn't able to get any other additional information from Caltrans.
Very good. So we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep working on that, but I think the next step is just to get contact with Caltrans and get some dialogue going there. Next up, we've got this Caltrans culvert at Stony Creek. Again, there was a brief comment in the minutes from last meeting that maybe some, some follow-up report would be provided. I don't know, Todd, if you've got any update on that one for us, or?
Yeah, I can give you an update on, on where we're at with that. So this is in, in relation to the Trinity Trail, so we're currently working on completing the NEPA for this trail segment, and so we're talking about the section that goes from Stewart Fork Bridge and will connect to, just past Stony Creek there, connects to the existing trail by, by Pinewood Cove. So all the specials reports have been completed for that. The NEPA language is gonna indicate that an encroachment permit is gonna be necessary from Caltrans at that crossing from Stony Creek. That's just a kind of a pinch point that, that only, you know, you got the lake, you got the culvert, you got the highway right there, so. So we're gonna need an encroachment permit from, from Caltrans prior to implementation. Caltrans indicated that any trail that's within their, their right-of-way will need to meet their specifications, and that includes ADA compliance. So there's some criteria in terms of slope, width, substrate, like surfacing material that goes along with that, and that does require engineered plans. So our, our hope is that, you know, by having the NEPA complete, we can compete for external funding that might be available to help with that design to get, to get that trail across that, across that culvert. So next, next steps are complete the NEPA, and then continue to work with Caltrans and secure funding, external funding for engineering design to get, to get across that culvert.
Very good, Tony. Tara, you got a question, Carol?
Yeah, so I think one of the questions has been whether or not it really needs to be ADA compliant. Originally, Leslie Yen suggested that it be a multi-use trail, which would mean it would have to be ADA compliant in terms of a wider trail bed, but since then, the collaborative has asked to just have it be for essentially mountain bikers, which is a narrower width. And so have you, do you know if you've talked to that, to Caltrans about that, that it doesn't really need to be ADA compliant anymore?
Yeah, no, I think that sounds right, that the, the trail itself, the plan was to not necessarily make it ADA compliant, but that is a Caltrans requirement that, that any, any encroachments into their right-of-way meet that ADA compliance. I think that's, that's, from my understanding, that's a Caltrans policy.
It doesn't seem consistent with the trail that's around Whiskey Town that drops down off of 299 there. That trail's not.
Kara, I completely agree. I believe you're talking about the Oak Bottom Ridge Trail and Whiskey Town. It's like just below the highway. When I spoke with Caltrans, I specifically brought that up, and that trail was in place prior to the, the stipulations that they're citing now. So it was effectively grandfathered in. So when I brought that up, thinking the exact same thing, like, hey, this shouldn't be that big of a deal. They said, the trail you need to be thinking about is the Dana to Downtown Trail in Reading that parallels Highway 44 crossing over the Sacramento River, which is way more development level and robust.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
And about 12 feet wide.
It, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that seems.
That, that helps a lot. Thank you. And then at one of the Recreation Committee meetings, Mike McFadden had said that since we've kind of hit a stumbling block here, it sounds like it's gonna take a while to get the engineering, refunding for the engineering plans and so forth, that Mike was interested or working on extending the trail northward from would be Clark Springs, the Lakeshore Trail, to essentially easier places where we could do a NEPA. Do you know what the status of that is, or if that was just kind of a throwaway comment?
So Carol, I'm gonna speak to that really quickly. So as you know, that's the National Recreation Area takes the lead on that. We tend to get a lot of local comment and, and ideas that kind of get thrown through, but, but, you know, Sarah and Joe have been, have been tracked down the original request, and so I don't think that the alternatives have fully been fleshed out. So as you heard Todd say, they're working on that NEPA document. We can definitely get Mike to try to get that on a map and sit down with Joe and connect the dots across the forest there, so we can, we can look at that and see if that's a viable option. Sorry to speak for you guys over there, but I wanted to, since it was Mike, I wanted to jump in there for a minute.
That would, that would be a great alternative if we can't get this short stretch that we've been trying to get for over 10 years. If we could move forward with other stretches that are more feasible, that would, that would be wonderful.
Okay, yes, we got a hand up. Ross?
Yeah, there's other places like from Tanuary to Stewart Fork Bridge, across Stewart Fork Bridge where we just use the road. You know, why don't we use the road or go across there? If we have an ADA compliant, there's no way for them to get a wheelchair on the road because the trail coming up to it and going away from it is not ADA compliant. Maybe else ridiculous, this situation. Just, just, just not get a permit from them at all, just use the road, road in that better yard portion, you know? Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Ross.
Yeah, I know that's been, I know that's been talked about, Ross, in the past, and I, I think the main, the main concern there is just the safety of, of putting people up on the, on the highway. You know, there's, it's likely you're gonna have families with kids, and not everybody's gonna be an experienced, you know, adult mountain biker that, that might be using this trail. So that's, that's been the main concern with, with anybody up on the highway.
There is a safe, there is a, a barrier between the road and the edge where you'd follow. You'd be blocked off from the highway by a barrier.
Okay. I mean, that can be something we, you know, part of this moving forward is gonna be working with Caltrans to, you know, figure out some way to get across that, so. You know, either way, it sounds like they're gonna be involved in that, that solution, so, you know, that, that does sound like a, you know, the main concern is safety. So if we can get a safe, a safe crossing there, you know, regardless of what that method is, you know, even a bridge, I know a bridge would be very expensive, you know, foot, footbridge, but that could be an option in the future.
Okay. Any other comments on that culvert there at Stony Creek? Seeing none, we'll move on. So our last item here under follow-up items, you probably recall, those of you that were at the January meeting, there was a suggestion, a recommendation, maybe even a request, that we take a look at kind of how we've been providing the minutes to you. They are recorded and, and pretty much verbatim, as Tara discovered this morning. So it's been suggested that maybe we make an effort to pare them down, a Cliff Notes kind of approach, just kind of the highlights for each section. So Kelly and I did discuss that. Unfortunately, we've had a little funding lapse here with our agreement, so we just didn't have the time, basically, to really dig into that any deeper this go-around. So when that funding lapse is addressed, which I believe it will be soon, and there is efforts currently underway to address that funding issue, yeah, we'll, we'll kind of revisit that one and, and put our heads together and see what we can come up with in terms of addressing that request or that need, so. Very good. All right, up next.
Hey, hey, Jim, this is Tom. Hey, just a suggestion on that is just download it to ChatGPT and just request a summary, and you will get a very small, one-page summary of that 20-page, 25-page document.
Wow, seriously?
Yes.
PPT, here we come. I'm on it.
Artificial intelligence will take over your job.
Wow. Well, thank you, Todd. We'll, we'll have to explore that. I've never really jumped into the ChatGPT pool yet, but there's always, there's always a first time, so. Okay, wildfire camera update. As you can see on the agenda, we, we do have a presentation demo for you this morning, Mike Wilson and company. But before we get there, I just wanted to kind of give an update where, where things sit with our efforts to get more cameras in, in Trinity County. We did have a team's call on February 8th, so that was post-January meeting. And again, those calls, we've got a little subcommittee of the collaborative, along with Mike and his team. We get together periodically just to check in and kind of get, get a progress update, so that was the intent of that February 8th call. I think the, the principal findings or, or takeaways from that call were, we're still on track for the eight sites, two not on Forest Service, six on Forest Service, and we'll maybe get an update from Tara here on the, on the NEPA, on those six. But yeah, so we heard on that call that those eight sites that we've discussed here previously at, at previous meetings are, are all, all green lights going forward. But the other information that was shared with us by Kevin Anderson was that PG&E does have some interest in, in pursuing additional sites. So that was good news. And so in addition to the eight, Kevin and working with PG&E kind of came up with what he refers to as a wish list. And on that wish list, there are sites both in Shasta County as well as Trinity County. So I did go through that list, that wish list, to see where there's overlap with our list, our spreadsheet that the collaborative developed a number of years ago. So I'll just read off the additional sites that PG&E has interest in pursuing, that again, overlap and kind of line up with the collaborative spreadsheet. So we have Ironsides, Weaver Bali, Bonanza King, Bowerman Ridge, McFarland Ridge, Ketten Palm Peak, Dubicella Mountain, Horse Ridge, Eagle Rock. I believe that's nine. So now we're up to, you know, potentially, if we add the eight, the nine, 17 sites, 15 of which are on our current spreadsheet. So that's all good news. I believe Kevin has forwarded that list to Tara and, and just indicated, you know, the PG&E, Alert, California, and certainly the collaborative would request that as opportunities present themselves through the NEPA process, whether that's specific to those projects or, or part of a broader project, that they be incorporated and, and into kind of that workload flow going forward. So that's kind of the update on where we stand as far as efforts to get, again, more cameras here in Trinity County. Maybe this would be a good time, Tara, to, I know you sent out an email, but maybe you can elaborate.
Yeah, absolutely. So we scoped for the, the six cameras, eight, six are on, on, yeah.
Yep.
So for the six cameras, unfortunately, we'd had a, an error in our email address, as, as many of you know. We used to take a lot of pride in being at fs.fed.us, and USDA brought us, reined us back in. So ever since we've switched, we've automatically got in, the stuff that went to the old email got automatically forwarded to our new email, and that stopped happening. So long story, but the, the scoping document will be extended for two weeks. It'll be in the Trinity Journal next Wednesday, which, I'll get to that. It'll be in the Trinity Journal, and comments will be due by March 30th. I expect, I don't expect this to be a big setback. I still plan to have that NEPA document completed by probably mid-May at the, at the latest. So we're still, we're still moving forward, and, and things are looking good as far as that goes. So the Trinity Journal, I'm sure many of you know, because you live here, for, for the paper of record, they, they tend to use a record searchlight, and that's because the record searchlight is a daily paper, and that's one of the things that's required for our, our newspaper of record. So at some point, before I got here, we kind of stopped putting things in the journal, and so I've, I've fixed that. So it's not the paper of record, but we are putting the, our activities and things in the journal. I was frustrated that this one, in particular, had fallen through the cracks the first time, so since I'm extending the, the scoping period, we're gonna make sure it gets in the paper. So you, you, you'll see it there.
Cool.
Yeah, and, and the fact that we didn't, when the first period ended, we got no comments. It was like, hmm, because I know everyone is really passionate about it and really wants to, to have those cameras installed. So I figured either the email address or not, it wasn't in the local paper, probably played a big role in that, so, but that's why I'm extending it for two weeks.
All right, Carol. Oh, Carol, yes, and Chris, Chris, Carol first, yep.
Yeah, just two things real quick. So somehow I got dropped off the email list for like the teams' meetings for the subcommittee. I would appreciate being added back into that. And the second thing is, so I'm still unsure, this is Fretchie Ridge on the list, the Norwegian Tower? I read, I did read the.
I think.
Meeting notes, which were.
Kind of are, I don't know if Kevin's on with us, Mike, but I think Fretchie Ridge and Trinity Center, by and large, one and the same, so Trinity Center is on our list. Yes, it was on the original list.
Okay, just so you know, I was up there last month dealing with some cell tower issues, and that road is in really bad shape. The pole is still there for Travis, but the trees are definitely growing up around it. You can't see anything off of that pole, so just an update there.
Very good. Kristen.
Yeah, sorry, having technical difficulties here. Yeah, so just, just a quick note. Ketten Palm, we, the, we do not have a presence there anymore. The Ketten Palm lookout, which we weren't using as a lookout, burned in the August complex, and we have since relocated that radio repeater where I already have NEPA coverage at Grizzly Peak. So I just want to make a note there that Ketten Palm is probably not the appropriate location.
Yeah, thank you, Kristen. Again, I, I don't know that we're always relying on towers currently. I think Alert California is prepared to put up their own, you know, pole or infrastructure, what have you, but, but yeah, Grizzly Peak is a good alternative. I'm certain that Alert California will take a look at that and see if it gives them the same kind of coverage and.
Okay, the other issue with Ketten Palm is we don't have good access to it. It's all through easements, and there's been security issues there as well.
Well, that is another good, good bit of information to share. So thank you very much. We'll, we'll make sure that gets passed along. Okay, so any other questions on just kind of where we stand with the wildfire camera effort here in Trinity County? Seeing none? Mike, yeah, again, thank you for offering to give a little presentation. We've certainly been talking about these cameras for quite some time, but yet have not really been able to see the full utility of, of the camera system that Alert California manages and operates, so looking forward to that. So take it away.
Sounds good. Thank you. So to begin with, I'm very fortunate to be joined by my team members, Kevin Anderson and Elise Cooper. Kevin's our project manager for the new installs that are taking place, and Elise is our Operations Center Manager out of our Operations Center down in Chico, California. Just a little bit of history on, on Alert California and, and how it came to be. So I think when, when you started researching the additional towers that we were originally looking at, that was with Alert Wildfire. Alert Wildfire was a collaboration of three universities, UC San Diego, University of Oregon, and University of Reno, Nevada, working together on the Alert Wildfire program until September of 2022, when the decision was made to ultimately separate the universities and. When, uh, the decision was made to ultimately separate, uh, the universities and, uh, which time Alert California stood up. And replaced the Alert, uh, Wildfire program here in California. So as that all, uh, began to transpire, uh, we, we actually. Uh, found that, uh, there was a lot of communication still through, uh, the different universities, uh, that was not getting to, uh, either UC San Diego. Or to, to our parent company, Digital Path and Chico, that, uh, worked on the Alert California program as a public private partnership. Uh, with, with UC San Diego being the primary, uh, entity running that program. So here in California now with Alert California, we have, uh, approximately, uh, well over, uh, uh, eleven hundred and sixty cameras. We, uh, operate, uh, an operations center twenty-four, uh, seven, uh, primarily stood up, uh, with, with additional staffing during fire season. So that when new fires are detected across the state, we, we actually are able to, uh, immediately confirm those fires and send that information through an alert. To the appropriate dispatch center or ECC, uh, to, uh, to, uh, ultimately provide the information on the new fires. So our, our operations center that staffed there supports, uh, that, that, uh, that notification system. And, uh, we also, uh, through this, uh, program have developed what's called Alert West, where we're expanding our camera system across the Western U S. And so as we do that, we work with each state to again, partner with universities in each state. And, uh, the fire agencies to bring in additional cameras so that we can, uh, work together to again, uh, try to become, uh, full scale as we are here in California. So as we continue to look at the sites and identify, uh, the sites that we, uh, located and, and talked through, uh, the needs up in, up in Trinity County. We, uh, do, uh, communicate through some of our sponsors, including PG&E. Who again is looking at, uh, additional funding to support the cameras. Some of those were already, uh, funded and planned, uh, for building in twenty twenty-four. But we're, uh, Kevin continues to engage with them to, uh, again, identify additional spots in hopes that we. Increase our overall coverage, not only in, in Trinity, but in, in Siskiyou, Shasta and Humboldt as well, with, with that entire area. Where we have some voids, uh, with, with lack of coverage. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elise Cooper, our operations center manager. And she's going to just provide a demo of, of your, uh, of our system today. Uh, during that demo, uh, if you wouldn't mind, uh, Elise is actually working out of the operations center today. So they're actually working on detecting, uh, detecting active fires across the Western U S. So, uh, if for any reason she needs to pause and step out, uh, Kevin and I will step in and try to answer questions. But after that brief presentation, we'll, uh, provide a Q and A for anybody that has any questions and we'll be happy to follow up on, on anything that we don't have answers for today. So Elise, over to you.
Hi, everybody. Um, apologies. My camera is not working very well today. So I guess I'm just going to be on mic, but can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Awesome. Um, I'm going to share my screen. All right. Everybody see that? Okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. It's nice to meet you all. Um, I'm Elise. As Mike was saying, I'm the manager for the operations center, um, here in Chico. And, um, I'm just going to give you guys a very brief demonstration of the system today. Um, normally these demonstrations are like an hour long. So, um. Bear with me. I'm going to do my best to kind of highlight, um, the major features and just give you, um, a taste of what it's like to use the platform. Um, so as Mike was saying, we're an early wildfire detection system. We're a command and control platform and an all hazards awareness tool. Um, so we've got this network, um, of, of over one thousand cameras all over California, um, in addition to all of the Alert West cameras that, like you said, have been. Spreading, um, eastward across the U S. Um, another cool thing is our platform also integrates with over seven thousand fixed cameras through collaboration with third-party agencies. Um, like the Department of Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration. Um, our goal is just to save life and property through this technology. So, um, we have a couple of ways of doing this. Um, one way is just. Honestly, using the cameras directly for your own situational awareness in your area, um, even without the AI. And the other part is the AI and the AI is really cool. So I'm going to give you guys a summary of how that part works. Um, so essentially we've got all of these cameras, right? And they spin, um, three hundred and sixty degrees approximately every two to ten minutes, depending on their network connection. When they do that, they generate what we call, um, a panoramic image or a three hundred and sixty degree view. And at that point, um, those images are run through artificial intelligence that we developed. And it scans the environment for early signs of wildfires. Once it has detected something, um, the system will estimate a latitude longitude. It's getting pretty accurate at this point. It's really cool. Um, and this alerts our twenty-four seven operations center where I work. Uh, at that point, trained technicians eliminate false positives, uh, verify new incident locations and send incident alerts to subscribed users. So, um. Those alerts are set up with this little bell icon down here. Those are really cool. Um, these are fully customizable. You get to choose, um, your geographic region. You get to choose the days and times that you receive alerts and you get to choose your notification method. So, um. There, it's fully up to you how you use them. You get to choose, um, you know, when you receive them, how you receive them and what areas you receive them for. Um, once you receive an alert, um, that's the perfect time to log on to our website. If you're not already on it, view the fire from multiple angles. For optimized situational awareness and, um, just use all the things the tool has to offer. Um, so this is our homepage. Uh, as you can see, we're just showing the California cameras right now, uh, but we can come up here and show all kinds of things. Uh, we can choose to show, uh, all the cameras that are out of states and we can also choose to show, um, like get rid of the Department of Transportation ones. There's, there's all kinds of. Um, customizations that you can do up here. Um, one really cool thing is that our map always, um, directly, um, it collaborates with this right-hand gallery view right here. So anytime you're highlighting cameras over here, you can see that they're, they're highlighting all over the state. Um, again, down here, this is our alerting feature that we have. This is super great, um, just for. Being able to customize the information that you're receiving just for your area. We receive so much information, um, throughout the day from so many different. Resources. It's super helpful to just be able to use this tool. Um, we can actually custom define. Um, an area with this little polygon right to, tool right here. And, um, that will allow you to only get. Alerts for the area that you drew. So you can, um, draw this, or you can even come to our map layers that we have available and you can pick one, um, from. U S counties, uh, CAL FIRE units, national forest boundaries. We've got all kinds of things in here. And, um, if there's anything that we're missing, you guys can request that we add it. Um, next I'm going to take you guys and just show you the camera console page really quickly. So I'll choose a. Hopefully a camera that is online. Let me get rid of this. Sorry, my, my polygon tool is being a little weird. I'm going to reload my page. Okay. Here we go. So, um, this, this camera is actually actively watching something. Looks like it, uh, is probably smoke. Out in the valley area. Um, so this is where we host our, um, camera images. This area is where you're going to see what the camera is seeing. It reports imagery, um, approximately every three seconds. So approximately every three seconds, you're going to get a new image here. Um, we also have the ability to, um, use our live stream mode, which is this button right here to get actual, uh, live footage. This is not quite available on all of our cameras throughout the system yet, but it is something that we are, um, working on integrating into every camera. Um, in, within the next couple of months. Uh, in addition, as you could see earlier, we've got our map again showing up here. Um, one cool thing about this is you can actually highlight, uh, other cameras. And see what they're seeing even within just the Duckett Peak camera console page. So I can have, um. Optimize situational awareness by just going around and seeing what other cameras are seeing. This is really helpful if you have two cameras that are, um, looking into the same direction, um, or even three cameras that are possibly giving us a triangulation of the location for an incident. Um, I, another thing that we have to, um, help increase awareness of what's going on, um, incident awareness, who's using the platform is this event log right here. So anytime that, um, we move cameras, you guys can go see, okay, who moved it last? Um, they can give a reasoning for why they moved the camera. And you can figure out what exactly this camera is being used for right now. Um, if there is an incident, a lot of times, um, fire personnel. Will leave comments about, um, whatever incident is happening to let you know the name, um, you know, an updated location, stuff like that. Um, and then here is our, um, three hundred and sixty degree panoramic image right here. Um, this thing is really cool because if you, um, center the camera on the map, you can see. As you're moving along on. The image, um, what direction you're pointing in. Our cameras are, um, about ninety percent of them at this point are very well calibrated. So, um. Wherever you are pointing on here, it's going to show the correct direction on the map. Um, a couple of other features that we have are, um, just some of the, um, other buttons up here on our navigation bar. You can search for whatever camera. Um, you want to search for up here, um, out of, you know, the several thousand that are on here. Sometimes it can be hard to remember. Um, but again, you can also click on them on the map. Uh, if you click menu up here, um, in the right sort of corner, um, there is our contact information for our twenty-four seven operations center. So when you guys eventually, um. You know, if you're onboarded onto the system, if you're actually using it, um, if you're experiencing any issues, or even if you are not a logged in user and, and you see an issue. Um, you can call this number anytime and we will answer, um, and try to. Help you with whatever that issue is as quickly as possible. Um, another thing that we have here that's really cool is our help and support tool. So, um, you can come here to, uh, look at our video library. We've got a couple of tutorials on, um, how some of the features work. Um, we've got some troubleshooting techniques. We have a couple of, um. Just explanations of, of different ways you can use the platform. And then we've got a contact form. Um, this contact form is for, uh, reporting any like bugs you see with the website, or if you have users that you'd like to onboard, um. You know, cameras, things like that. So that's, um, basically how you would contact the operations side of things. Um, I know that I'm limited on time, so I'm not going to go, um, into anything else directly, um, unless somebody has, actually I'll show you guys one more thing. Sorry. Um, another really cool thing that we have here is our active cameras. So, um, again, we, we really are, are into highlighting, um, the ability to use this platform to optimize situational awareness. So one thing that you can do is you can choose to just highlight active cameras. And what that's going to do is it's going to show you all cameras in the state that have been moved, um, within the last couple of hours. Um, and then what it's also going to do in addition to that is, um, when you're scrolling through this tile set right here of cameras, it's going to, um, show you just the, the most recently moved. Four cameras so that you can see, hey, here's all the cameras that were just moved. Here's the areas where there's most likely to be new starts, new incidents. Does anybody have any questions about any of the features that I reviewed or anything else that you maybe saw on the website that I didn't go over? I see, uh, Larry.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. So when you're, is this available to everyone or just certain folks?
Um, so I'll show you what it looks like, um, for the version that is available to everyone. So this, this is the version that's available to everyone. I just logged out. I'm now a logged out user. Um, logged out users have the ability to, um, look at all of the cameras. They can go to any camera console page. Uh, so I'm going to click here. Um, and they can view it. They can do all of that stuff like viewing, um, what the camera is looking at. They can play a time lapse right here to see last fifteen minutes, last hour. Um, and you can go along the panorama and see like what direction you're pointing. And, uh, look at our, a couple of our tutorials that we have here. You can, um, you can still view active cameras as a logged out user, which is pretty cool. Um, the main thing that you can't do is you cannot access. Um, the ability to move a camera. So a, a user without an account cannot move a camera and they cannot set up alerts. Those are the main differences.
Okay, that was my question. So who's qualified to be able to get alerts?
Um, so what qualifies you to, um, be onboarded into the system with an account is, um. That part comes a little bit before me most of the time. Um, it oftentimes has to do with, um, contracts or with whatever agency you're affiliated with. But, um, that would be more of a Mike Wilson question.
Yeah, Larry. So each fire agency and, uh, utility company or companies that, uh, are, are utilizing the system for protection of assets and, and infrastructure. Um, have designated individuals within each agency who make a determination on who within their agency can, uh, actually view. For, for an example. For a CAL FIRE unit, they'll be an assigned person out of their, their local ECC. Who will make a decision who within the unit has, uh, access. That can be field battalion chiefs. It can be, uh, people working the operations or emergency command center. It can be, uh, division chiefs, uh, oftentimes, uh, prevention chiefs. So they, they typically keep it at the upper level. Again, knowing that when they put their cameras on a new fire for situational awareness. That from the, uh, emergency command center where they're doing that, the fire personnel in the field can still view the cameras and have access to this. Information that they would have in the ECCs, if that makes sense.
So I guess what I was trying to drill down on was at the beginning of what she was talking about. She said there was some sort of alert process where people. Within a defined area would receive an alert. And I was asking that question, I guess with my fire safe council hat on, so.
But no, it isn't. Never mind.
Get, get a little feedback from somebody else there. Uh, I understood Larry. So from your, your, uh, your question. So if, if, uh. It, it's not, a- again, command and control options are not open to the public. Uh, so, so that we don't have con- uh, conflicting, uh, situations where a citizen would be moving a camera during a fire.
Yeah, no, I, I totally understand. I wasn't getting at that. I just was talking about the ability to receive an alert.
Um, yeah, the, the ability to see, to receive an alert is not currently open to the public. Um, you do have to be a user within the system and have a point of contact through some sort of a. Um, fire agency, government agency, utility company.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Right. Any other questions for Mike or Elise? Okay. So Elise, is that all you had for us? I know we were limiting you on time. We apologize for that, but we certainly appreciate the presentation and the information shared. And hopefully everyone has a better sense of. You know, what, uh, this. System is capable of and, and, you know, what we as a community in Trinity County will gain, like, once we get more of these cameras in place. So.
Yeah, absolutely. You're welcome. Um, yeah, I, that's all I have for right now. Cause I, I know that, um, you guys need to get on with other stuff, but I'm always available to do, uh, longer presentations to highlight more of the features if you guys ever want that.
Very good. Very good. So Mike, Kevin, uh, again, before we, uh, you know, close out here, is there any other updates you'd like to, uh? Share with us or we, we cover most of those kind of, uh, in our update. Section.
Uh, nothing from my side, but Kevin, do you have anything to add?
I, no, no, I think, uh, you guys, uh, covered it this morning. Uh, just to thank you, uh, Tara for providing an update on, on the NIPA process. And then, um. You know, again, Jim, thank you for, for inviting us and, uh, we appreciate your guys' time.
You bet. Thank you. Appreciate the partnership and hopefully we'll, uh, we'll begin to see some of these cameras, uh. Come online.
I, I will point out for the folks in the audience that, uh, your, your RCD and, uh, Jim and, and the folks who have been working on this project are very active. And, uh, been, been wonderful and proactive at making sure that these cameras do get up and built, uh, in your area. Again, with, uh, the idea of, of fire prevention and mitigation being, uh, a priority to them. So great work, Kelly, Jim, and, uh, and our US Forest Service folks. Uh, who've been involved in that, uh, much appreciated. And, uh, it, it was great, uh, getting the introduction. Uh, to our district ranger who, who's been very helpful in getting the NIPA process pushed through. Um, where we were actually struggling through the unfortunate, very slow process that's in place, uh, through some of our, uh, federal agencies that we're used to. But we're, we're definitely not seeing that, uh, in your case. We're, we're seeing very proactive work. So great job.
Yeah, Mike, uh, just a quick question here. Maybe this is a Kevin question, but do we, do we have a, a timeline for installation, Kevin, on, on the, you know, the eight that we've kind of got rolling right now?
Uh, yeah, we're, we're essentially, uh, just going to be limited by snow, you know, uh, as soon as the, the NEPA is approved, we're going to get out there and, and get the installations done.
Great. Awesome. Sweet. Very good. Oh, uh. Is that Jim?
Hey, hi, everybody. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm using Genesis computer, but this is Jerry. I just. About the last few pictures of the presentation and it was good to hear that recap that it can happen soon. Hi, everybody.
Hello. Thank you, Jerry. Okay. We will call it a wrap on the wildfire camera update. Again, thank you, Mike and your team for your presentation.
All right, folks. Have a great day. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So up next we've got the Minerville Boat Ramp. We did have a very good presentation from Todd at our rec committee, uh, last week. So Todd, uh, you want to give us. A recap of that update on Minerville?
Sure. Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. So Minerville boat ramp currently at the 30% design stage. Probably the biggest update was the public meeting that was held recently in, in February. Definitely appreciate all the input that was received at that, that meeting. Next step is to have a meeting with the Vision of Boating and Waterways to discuss that input that we received from the public and any potential changes to the design. We're definitely looking at ways to address the concerns that were brought up, especially the, the parking situation. So, you know, we definitely understand the, the difficulty of having, you know, a low water ramp that's a long ways from the, the high water mark and having the parking above, above high water. That was, you know, directly related to the, our inability to get a permit from the water board to have below high water parking. So, you know, responding to, to the input we got at that meeting and, you know, ongoing input. We're, we're gonna meet, Sarah's gonna meet with the water board to discuss that below high water parking situation. So. So that's where we're at with that. Sarah will be back in the office on, on Monday. So I don't know if that meeting got set. I know she had reached out to the water board before she, she left, but I don't know if that, that meeting date is, is solid yet, but that's, that is the next step there. And those, you know, the, the design criteria are all, you know, 30, 60, 90, 100 are all related to the Division of Boating and Waterways requirements and the grant funding for that. So we have to have their BBWs, you know, kind of approval at each of those design stages. So yeah, we're currently, you know, between the 30 and 60% design. So having that, having, this is a good time to be able to incorporate changes. You know, we're not so far down that we're, we're kind of locked in. So it is a good time to, to get that, that input and hopefully resolve that. So wanted to touch on the access road to Minerville. I know that's a concern. You know, it's on that unstable soil. It is, the road's kind of slowly, you know, migrating downhill. It's kind of been patched together. The plan is to do the improvements on the road and repairs on the road after the construction. So as to not, you know, fix our road and then tear it up more with, with a bunch of heavy equipment, construction equipment. So. We can't unfortunately use BBW funding for the road repairs, but our forest engineers have requested funding for the, for the road fix. So I see Carol stands up.
Yeah, I think I really appreciated the update last week. I'd be, I would like to know when Sarah's meeting with the water board, if, if that's something that we could find out at some point. I just wanted to ask though, we're getting a lot of social media, community comments up here. The boat dock has not been installed at Minerville. I was wondering if you had a chance to see when that might be installed?
I'm looking at Joe because I think he just talked with, with SRC recently.
Uh, yeah, Carol, we, I did just talk with SRC about that recently. And my comment on Minerville says no dock. And I failed to get the rest of the rationale as to why. I thought it had something to do with the being, as it's more full, that Minerville ramp gets less use. But as the, not the rec officer for the West Side, I want to put a little caveat on that and get back to you. And I can get back to you directly or I can get back to the group as a whole and go from there.
It's, it's still getting used and it's kind of dangerous trying to launch when there's no dock. So the dock is installed at Trinity Center, but it was having trouble with the cable and there's no gas there. So if you gotta go get gas, Minerville's a lot closer to where you can get gas than Trinity Center. So anyway, yeah, I'd appreciate if you guys could follow up on both those docks. And I apologize for diverting from the main ramp improvement issue.
Okay, I will absolutely follow up. I'm gonna, I'll shoot a couple of texts right now. Maybe I can get it over text and circle back before the meeting's done. If not, we'll definitely get it out to the group when we do get that response.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Todd, anything else on Minerville?
No, I think that's it unless there are any other questions.
Any other questions for Todd? Not seeing any. Thank you very much. All right, up next, we've got Tara. She's requested a couple of agenda items here. First up is the five-year plan. Tara, take it away.
All right. Uh, thank you. So I wanted to let you know a couple of things. We have been working to develop our, our five-year plan. We're, we're pretty, we're certainly locked in on our, you know, the next few years for what our plan looks like. That includes, as you know, we're finishing up the, the High and Palm planning process is, is well underway and should get signed May or June. And then we'll be switching over to the Big Ranch project. That project is, will take a year. It'll be an EA. It will take a year. It's, it's a lot of acres. So and while we're doing that, Todd and his group over there will be getting started at some point on the North Trinity County Community Risk Reductions, that Highway three area. They'll be, they'll be working on that. They've already started to put the team together. We're starting to look at treatment areas. So, so that's progressing. So what I, what I had talked about, and I see that it says US Forest Service. I think to make this most useful for all of you is I think that I'll, I'll touch on it briefly today. And then for our next in-person meeting, I can stay remote and be able to share a map and kind of, kind of show you. It's always better to see it on a map. And then I'll give me a chance to reach out to, to Kristen and make sure that we, you know, we're picking up what, what she's planning in those areas as well. So, so really briefly, Big Ranch will be the 24, 25. Start in the summer of 24, finish in the summer of 25. Additionally, while that's going on, I'm gonna have to check before I was scribbling on here. While that's going on, South, South Fork Mountain is a field break that we share with the Six Rivers. That, that planning team is going to be getting kicked off here soon in 24. And then we'll do in 20, finish up in 25, we'll have Big Ranch Junction City, a project at Junction City that's community risk reduction and post-fire and some proactive forest resiliency work. The Weaverville Community Forest Fuel Break in, within the community forest with partner Led Neepo, it's RCD. That'll get kicked off here in 24 and probably finish up in 25. We talked about North Trinity County Risk Reduction. And if there's any questions about where these are, I, I know you'll have questions. But I, I know nothing gets by anybody here. Also, we have some outside funding to, to look at doing some additional work in the river complex and also to look at the Trinity Divide Fuel Break. So that, that should be moving forward. In 26, we'll look at a large project around Hay Fork. So the Hay Fork Community Risk Reduction and also be looking at some Trinity, Trinity Alps Critical Egress-Ingress projects. That'll make sure that our forest visitors that are out the trailheads can, can get in and out safely in an emergency and address fuels along those access routes. In 27, we'll look at the Deloma area. And in 28, I will be looking at the Post Mountain Highway 36 area. Again, that's just a brief rundown. I will, I will bring this in written format. And one thing I was thinking that could help you with the notes. I normally write out my notes. I don't just check and scratch them. So I can just send you whatever I'm planning to, to share ahead of time. That's typically what I do with the board. I either do it, you know, before I go to the board meetings or when I'm done, so they don't have to sit and try to take notes. So I, I can certainly do that for all of you.
Cool. That'd be great.
But in general, the, the plan, the big picture is that the, our, our planning teams will be doing large planning efforts, which would be, you know, it's looking like Big Ranch is a 50,000 acre large footprint with probably 30, on the Shasta Trinity side, roughly 30,000 acres of treatment. The Six Rivers piece, for instance, is a 10,000 acre footprint with probably about five to 6,000 acres of treatment. So that will be focused. Our planning teams will be focused on that. Our partner-led NEPAs with the RCD as well as with the Watershed Center will be looking in those smaller 3,000, 5,000 acre and trying to stay within some CE categories to keep their planning efforts fairly straightforward and focused. So that's generally the, the direction we're moving. Really appreciate the, the Shasta Lake Ranger District, the NRA coming over and taking on the planning for not only their piece of County, but also the, the TRMU side as well. So I think moving out and working across district boundaries is, is the, and forest boundaries is the way of the future. And along those same lines, really appreciate Kristen will be taking the lead on the South Fork Mountain Fuel Break project. So that, that's it. A real quick down and dirty. With maps and things for you for our next meeting.
Okay, before I get to you, Arnold, I'd like to have, we've had a couple others join us since we started. So Susan, Joseph, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, this is Joseph Bauer, a member of the Collaborative.
All right. Thank you, Joseph.
And I've, and I'm Susan, and I apologize for being so late. We had, I had all sorts of terrible computer problems and I'm not very adept at them. So here we are.
It seems to be a theme today, so you're good.
No worries.
Yeah, Kenneth Baldwin, consulting forester, member of BBW and the Collaborative. And I also had a hard time getting on the Zoom meeting. It took 45 minutes.
Oh, wow. Well, glad you persevered, Kenneth, and, and you're with us. All right, Arnold, you're up. You're muted, Arnold. Your lips are moving. Let no. Uh-oh.
Bob next, please.
If you want to type your question into the chat, Arnold, we can.
There you go.
Got it in there if you want.
You want to type it in? Okay, he thumbs up. So we'll get a, we'll get a note from Arnold. Oh, Bob, Bob, you got your hand up?
I do. You'd never know it. Tara, hate to be that guy, but I guess I will be. Pilot project. Going to fail when?
Oh, I absolutely am. I have that for the rest of my update. This was our planning, five-year plan. And I totally, I, I'm ready for implementation. I, I, for this group not to ask me about pilot, you know, that, that wouldn't happen. So thank you, Bob, for reminding me though. I've got you, I've got it on my list.
All right, very good. Okay, I think Arnold's working on typing something in there. All right, while Arnold's typing, Tara, you want to give us a update on this joint partner trainings?
Yes, I'll jump into the joint partner training. So, one of the things the Shasta Trinity National went through recently was, was kind of identifying our, our core identities, like what do we want to make sure that we're doing right? And if we do these things right, you know, that'll lead to our successes. One of those four core identities was building and maintaining our trusted relationships. And so that, that speaks to the strength of this group and to our partners, especially our local partners here in, in Trinity County. And so we've identified some action items this year to make sure that we're, we're, we're investing in building that relationship. So along the realm of trusted relationships, and I saw Joe Steuben-Dick was in there. He was on our little subcommittee. We thought it made more sense to make sure we were offering trainings for our partners to, to participate in. If we're going to ask the RCD and the Watershed Center and, and folks to, to do timber marking for us or to do layout, then, then we should provide them with the training so they can meet our expectations. Also for, for NEPA planning and, and fire inspections and contract inspection. So happy to say that, I think a week ago, maybe two weeks ago now, we had a, the Forest Service had a big NEPA training in the region where our regional lead for NEPA planning kind of ran it remotely. And then there were satellite locations and then we had somebody in person. So there was one here, held here in Weaverville and our local partners attended. Were invited to attend, attended, got to ask questions, got to sit right alongside their Forest Service counterparts and, and be in the same training at the same time as us. So that was a big win. There's a timber show prep, training coming up in Redding. And, and then in addition, we've asked our, that's the person who puts on our qualified cruiser training to come put one on in Redding, oh, sorry, in Weaverville. And so the Six Rivers folks will be there. We will invite forestry techs from the RCD and from the Watershed Center to attend those trainings so they can become qualified cruisers. So that, that's all moving really well. I'm, I'm, I'm really happy with that part. And then the flip side of that is what I'm always remind, when I'm not being reminded about pilot, this group is really good about reminding me that you have endured a number of different rangers, different leadership, different in, in, at some point, you have to train, I think somebody said, we have to train a new one every time. So I, I heard that. And, and our, and our group, our task force discussed that. And so, and, and Rachel, our forest supervisor made it clear that we need to get the way that we do shared stewardship, the way that we partner, the way that we build these trusted relationships, built into our organization at, at all of the levels. Not, not just at, you know, whichever ranger happens to be sitting here today, but throughout our organization. So we are also adding in our new employee orientation, there'll be how to, how to work with our partners and what that looks like. And, and we're doing a new leader training and we're going to train our employees, especially those in leadership, crew leaders, those kinds of, about how, how we do shared stewardship here. And so that it becomes more of a, you guys get a more predictable outcome and it's built into how we do business instead of relying just on any one person. So I think that's a definitely a step in the right direction. And I want to do all to know that I definitely heard you guys. And, and I wanted to, Rachel and I both talked about trying to build that. So it was bigger than, bigger than any one or two people. So. I see Larry has this in the first.
Well, let's get to Arnold's question first. Larry, we'll get to you in a minute. We're going to get to.
I was just, I just had my hand up to make sure you answered Donald's question because it's mine.
Yes, so that, that's great. Thank you, Arnold, for that, for that question. For those of you that don't know, we do have a landscape team. And we are in, right in the process. I have a call later today to continue to talk about roles and responsibilities. So I want to be really clear. The other thing I, I've learned in Trinity County is, you know, we have strong relationships and we, we are on the same page a lot. And, and sometimes when teams come in from the outside, things can go awry. So the landscape team's role is to support the two forests and, and help increase our capacity by, you know, really pursuing some of the, the new technology, new ways to do things, helping us build and strengthen some of our other partnership opportunities. Like there's, there's this Trex group that does prescribed fire as well. So they, they can look into some of those things. We, we also have that governor's task force for the state of California that, that we should be better integrated in. But, but we're not as much as we can because there's only so much time in a day. So they're going to help us kind of meet some of those things, help us work some projects through the, through the agreements process. And then also where we have a gap on a planning team, you know, then they'll, they'll help us kind of do that, whether it's a NEPA planner or for us, for Eric's Fisheries reports, for instance, Bobby Miller is, her background is in fisheries. So I need somebody to review his report, you know, Bobby, Bobby met that need. So they're, they're to help us add capacity and support the forests and the, and the rangers as we, as we go to implement the landscape. Does that make sense? It was a long-winded answer.
Arnold, did we? Did we satisfy your question?
Got so much you left.
Okay. Okay.
You take silence as golden.
We will say silence is golden.
Well, as far as my part of it, of that question was, yeah, if it all works like Tara says it's going to work, that'll be okay.
All right.
Yeah, we're, you know, Larry, it's, it's not lost on Kristen or I that, um, you know, we are accountable. And we are, you know, doing shared stewardship with all of you, and, and we're going to make sure that, um, that. The landscape as a whole continues to, to, to work smoothly and, and doesn't just. Go awry and, and be a, a new team in from somewhere else. But I, I understand that concern.
All right. Thank you, Tara. Well, we're going to ask you to keep talking.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm ready for this.
Forest Service update, so.
Watch me. Hey, Monique, can you give the group an update on, um, all the great things going on with our Trinity County Rack? See what I did there?
There we go.
Yeah, sure thing. Um, so, so far with the Rack, we met this past Monday. And we reviewed all of our fourteen project proposals to be voted on this upcoming Monday on the eighteenth. Um, if folks are interested in attending, uh, we have a Zoom link that we'll be having the meeting on. And then we will also be having the meeting from five to eight at the Trinity County Library. Um, but we were unable to meet quorum at this most recent meeting. So this upcoming meeting on the eighteenth will have, uh, quorum, and we'll be able to vote on those projects. When those projects are voted on, I can give another follow-up update. But one of the main things with the Trinity County Rack that's going to be impacting our ability to vote on. Future projects is that we have a few members that are completing their four-year term with us. And although we do have a couple of Rack applicants, um, to be a part of a new nomination packet. We will need a few more people so we could fill and meet a quorum. Um, so if anyone is interested in participating in the Trinity County Resource Advisory Committee. Um, please let me know. The committee members are super vital to the process of being able to vote on local projects that happen. When we receive funding through the Secure Real Schools Act. And, yeah, we really appreciate all of our committee members because honestly, we would not be able to do this without them. So. Um, I know we have a couple of them on this call, um, Bob, Arnold, um, Carol, and. No, I don't want to miss anyone, just in case. So, oh, Ross is also on, uh, the committee. And, yeah, I don't think any other committee members are on today, but. Um, I really appreciate their time and service on our committee. Um, and if we can keep them longer, we totally would. Um, but right now, our current guidance is they can only stay for four years. And potentially longer, but. It'll, if, if, if that could happen. But that's my update. So if you want more information, please feel free to reach out to me. Um, I'll drop my email in the chat.
Quick, Carol Paula dropped a note in the chat that, uh, said she had to leave, uh, to deal with a fire department issue. But wanted to thank Monique for making that Rack meeting a total pleasure, and she loved the flowers. And as somebody that was actually there presenting, I was, uh, I was happy about how organized it was. And how smoothly the meeting went. So thank you, Monique, for doing, for doing all that.
Yeah, and I really have to thank Pat and Marla too, because they, they really helped run it, and of course Tara as well. Um, um, so really, everyone makes it go, go well, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
The eighteenth is March?
Yeah, Monday.
Yeah, Monday, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Monique.
Okay, so, um, thank you for that, Monique, and I will add, uh. I really appreciate, you know, these proposals aren't just something that somebody sits down, throws down a piece of paper, scratches it out and calls it good. There's, there's a lot of, uh, really great, well-thought-of, uh, projects that benefit. Um, the local communities in Trinity County, and I'm, I'm always just super impressed with, with everything that people bring to the table. Um, for those of you that don't know, my role with, uh, Rack is I'm the designated federal official. I, so I mostly, uh, the, the committee does, does all the heavy lifting, and again, I'm just along for the ride. Um, so, uh, really, Monique, I appreciate all of your hard work, and, um. It did run really smoothly until we let Pat step out of the room for a minute, and then we got a little, a little, a little crazy, but when he came back, we were right back on track.
I wasn't going to mention that.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, um, okay.
Jerry had his hand up.
Hey, I just wanted to ask Monique if she could send out the Zoom link in the. For, for the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I'll definitely do that. I'll put that in the chat.
Okay, thanks.
Perfect. Okay, um, so I have a couple of big, uh, personnel announcements to make. I am super thrilled. Uh, to tell you that the Mount Shasta McCloud District Ranger position has been filled. It will be filled by one Joe Roadarm, who, um, his previous job was our environmental coordinator at the forest level. Um, we have already talked about, uh, hey, you know, your part reaches over to Trinity County too. Um, I think, uh, Joe will be, he won't be as involved, obviously, as Kristen and I, but he wa, does want to. Um, meet with the Collaborative and be part of the, be part of it. So, uh, Joe Roadarm. Um, and, uh, so, yeah, I think that's going to be, it's a great, great selection for us. Um, and many of you know, they do have a project, uh, that's, that they're planning right now, that, uh. Parks Trinity project that's, uh, the IP road, they're looking to do, uh, some work on that road. Um, so. Yeah, so that was a big deal for us. And this is probably the best news for me, because not only are we getting a great Ranger. In Mount Shasta McCloud, but I'm getting Ben back. Um, they, Ben Sundahl, um, our deputy district ranger here on the west side. Um, Carolyn had retired like right around the holidays at the first of the year, so Ben has been keeping things running smoothly up there. So, um, I'm super excited to get Ben back. He will be coming to these meetings and on the field trips and things. Um, so look, look forward to getting Ben Sundahl back in his deputy district ranger role. Um, we have a question about the landscape team, uh, Bobby Miller, Miller and Marcus Novus and their regrets. I've talked to Jim, we're going to get them on the, uh, on the invite list for these meetings, um. Just so they can, you know, if there's any questions that come up related to the landscape or, or, uh, any reporting out, um, of how much we've gotten done so far. Um, they'll, they'll be the ones that can answer those kinds of questions. Um, one thing I did notice, Jim, is I think one of the benefits to being really active is I'm bringing in more time for the updates. It was like, huh, um, you know, it used to be we had one project and I, Pilot, we, we're talking about Pilot, sorry about Pilot. Let's, let's keep talking about Pilot. Um, anyways. So with, uh, the success we've had with the landscape, uh, brings, tends to bring visitors, which is a good thing. Um, so the RIT team, who are, who are some of the people that make the decisions about how, what levels to fund the landscape. They're going to be coming out to visit the landscape. We'll be taking them around this summer to go, go see some of the work they've been paying for, some of the areas we're going to be coming in to. Um, so, so they'll be out. Um, in addition, uh, the Joint Chiefs, uh. So that's not the two chiefs of the two agencies, but the people in Washington that run the, the Joint Chiefs program will be coming out to visit us, as you know. We've been, uh, funded with Joint Chiefs money for a long time. We have a history of being successful with that. So we're excited to have them out this summer as well. Um, also want to give you all a heads up, um, Jim, uh, the Forest Service will be reaching out to you. Um, I think Kelly's been doing this before, we're having a general management review. Uh, which means that the, the Wash, the regional office comes up and, and we'll check in with our partners, see how the Shasta Trinity is doing. So. Um, so you will hear from, from somebody, get a, you'll get an email invite, and Kelly can, you know, I think we did the last one in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. Um, okay, uh, great news. I have a date for the partner barbecue, June fifth. And we'll have a, it, um, and I also want to let you all know, because, um, I know this is, people will ask. Uh, there will be a, a barbecue and food provided. There will, none of your tax, taxpayer dollars go towards the food. Well, you know, we'll rent the hall because we need to have the meeting and get our people together, do the collaboration. But, um, no, your money is not being spent on the food. So just, just know that. Um, looking forward to that. So we'll work with, uh, with you guys and, and get that agenda developed and, and figure out a menu and all that other stuff. Okay, we already talked about the, um, we talked about the part, uh, about the Rack. Um, I'm going to start sending you my update, Jim, um, so you can either, either before I present it, but I'll, I'll type it up and get it to you. Uh, we talked about trusted relationships, um, we talked about the training. So let me talk about implementation. Um, oh, and I'll talk a little bit. The landscape is, as you have probably read in the paper, was funded at about thirty million dollars. Um, we, uh. Were spending that money to not only plan to implement this year, but to position us so that we have a steady program. That will allow us to be successful for the long run. Um. So my approach, uh, and, and Kristen will probably talk about hers, but, but my approach has been, I. My objective isn't just to, to spend money today to be successful today, but to, to make investments that will help us have a, have a glide path. To, to get up to a level of, um, resource, responsible resource management that will sustain us and, and position us for success into the future. Um, I don't want to be like, two years from now, I don't want to be hoping we get more money and then, and then not have positioned us for long-term success. So. So some of the investments we're making are in planning, in wildlife surveys for Big Ranch, that large fire footprint, or sorry, large planning footprint. Um, we're doing, we're still doing some restoration work in August Phase One and August Phase Two. Uh, we're gonna, when we do Big Ranch, we'll, we'll look at the, uh, detrimental effects of the Monument Fire. And we'll do some restoration within that large planning footprint. Um, so just kind of wanted to give you, we're, we're partnering with, uh, Trinity County again. Uh, we're making investments with the Watershed Center, with the RCD. Um, and then we're also paying for some implementation where, you know, there's not enough value to get, to get the wood out of the. Uh, for it to pay itself out of the, out of the woods. So some smaller plantations that are, um, too thick and are overgrown and, but not commercial. Well, that'll, that'll cost us money to get that treated. Um, so anyways, those are some of the things that we're looking at investing. Uh, this money in. Um, and then, uh, before I jump into higher, I wanted to let, also let you know, hiring is starting to slow down. You've probably been tracking the budget, um, so at least we're not closed. But, uh, hiring is slowing down, so we were very successful in a lot of rec areas. Um, we did add some GS nines, and we added a nine in botany, archaeology, wildlife and fisheries. Um, so those were good because it gives us some depth. Um, and then, uh, we got approved to add a ten-person fuels crew, um, to the west side. It'll be out of Reading so that it can go to the South Fork or the TRMU. Um, and in, you know, bad weather, they can also support the NRA. Um, so there's that, and then, uh, we increased our numbers by fifteen in recreation. And then I just want to remind, that sounds really great until you think that, that that's, um, a portion of the NRA. All of the South Fork and all of the Trinity River Management Unit. So it's a lot of acres that those folks cover. All right, implementation. So what you can expect for implementation this year. Um, will be, uh, more work under that large IRS CBPA. That covered a lot, um, that was a lot of letters, it wasn't it? Uh, so that's a service contract that we, uh, that we invested in last year. Um, and again, that's that, the fire salvage material that no, that it's cold now, Terry, so we missed the boat on it. Um, we're, we're getting that brought out of the woods and, and getting it, uh, set to wheelbrider and chipped. Um, and then in other areas, uh, where maybe we're, we are, there's some mastication we're doing out in the woods. Uh, so there's that continual fuels cleanup is, is still going on, will be going on this summer.
This is in the Monument footprint?
This one's in the August footprint, mostly. Um, there's, it was August and then, uh, a little bit of the tip first, which was. A long time ago. Um, and then, uh, some, some green pre-commercial work in Petty John as well. Okay, so that will be going on. I expect the, uh, the Petty John, uh, project will be active not only for the fuels work, but also, uh. For the timber, um, removal. And as you know, we don't, once, uh, uh, timber is under contract, we don't dictate when they do the work. I, I believe they're going to log, uh, this summer. Um, and then that brings me to, uh, Pilot Roads and Plantations.
Drumroll.
I am, I am diligently, uh, working on that. As a matter of fact, the biggest challenge I have right now is I'm, I'm. Uh, canvassing the forest, you get somebody to plow, um, our access back into there, because there's a couple of things we need to do to button it up. I've got, um, I've got to get a cruise for the biomass material, because. If I'm paying somebody to cut that material, skin it, cut skin deck. Um, because I want to get it out of the woods, and I would rather burn it on one landing, or if we can get it chipped and removed, if the road access is good, then, then we'll do that. If I can't, I'd rather burn it on the landing than have it piled all over the woods. Um, so, w- will, there'll be some cut skin deck work in there, there'll be the commercial piece of it, and then there'll be some stuff that's like mastication and just some handwork. Because as you know, there's some slope out there on that project. Um, so we're working to get all of that packaged up and into a spa. Um, this, this is the first spa we're going to do that will have product removal, and we're looking to put that into an agreement with the Watershed Center. So my drop dead date, uh, that I have to have that submitted because of, uh, grants and agreements is June first. Um, we're, we've started to get the draft put together. Um, we're getting the, uh, timber value figured out. We're getting those volumes into, um, Lori Magliano, our appraisal expert, she'll, she'll figure out the value of the commercial timber is. And, and we're, we're steadily working, um, on that particular spa. That, um, we should be able, we should get signed. So I have to have it into grants and agreements by June first. It will be prioritized because it's part of the landscape. Now, when I get it back, is that, then it's out of my control. We get it back soon enough, um, then the, then, um, the Watershed Center may be able to at least start some of that work. But regardless of that, I can tell you that last year, we carved out, I think, about. It's about seven hundred acres that we funded through Joint Chiefs for, uh, mechanical cut skin deck. So, um, that went into, that went through, uh, Kathy, uh, Norton's hands on the South Fork. We got that into a contract last year. They will be implementing that, uh, later this summer on the, on some of the pre-commercial work. So I, I carved out a chunk of Pilot, got it into a contract last year with, uh, Joint Chiefs funding. Are there any questions about Pilot? I should just stop there and wait. Okay, wow, no question. All right, so then, I, I know.
Hey, Tara, this is Tom.
Hi, Tom.
Hey, Tom.
Yeah, I, I can let you go. Um, you know, the, uh, I still am concerned. That the objective of the, of the Pilot project, which was to develop. A systematic method of, uh, operating along, uh, roads and ridges. Creating, uh, access, defensible space, all the things that we talked about in the white paper. But part of the objective was to do this as a method so that we could create. Uh, the ability to duplicate this using, uh, CE's and to scatter them. Uh, across the landscape, doing a thousand miles of road a year. And when I hear your five-year project or future project. There's no, uh, thought process going into, uh, using Pilot as the. Uh, stepping stone to implement, uh, another thousand miles of road a year under CE's. So how do you reconcile that?
Yep, that's a great question, Tom. Thank you for asking. So what, one of the lessons learned from Pilot, from the planning standpoint. Was that, uh, while we assumed that a linear feature that was narrow. Along a road would get through the Fish and Wildlife Service process quickly, that, that proved not to be the case. Um, so what I've been doing within our planning processes. Is taking the white paper and the objectives that this group identified and incorporating those into these larger projects. For instance, the Hyam Palm project has a, uh, FMZs, which are, um, which run along the roads. Which take the Pilot concept of that first, you know, one hundred and fifty feet, makes it a little bit wider and feathers it. So that the impacts to owls and, and habitat is less intense. And also then puts those fuel management zones on ridge lines, which there's no CE that addresses ridge lines. The CE category we have for linear fuel breaks is specific to man-made things, power lines, roads. So we've taken the concept that you. So we've taken the concept that you, that you guys worked so hard on and, and are incorporated into these larger projects. And the reason why is, um, you talked about doing three thousand acre, three thousand acres a year for ten years. And when I did the math, that only came up to thirty thousand acres. And unfortunately, what we're seeing with insect mortality, with fires, is that that, if, if that's all we did, it certainly was taking us a long time. Um, the impacts from First Wildlife Service were difficult. Um, but then we weren't really solving, um, the problems that we're facing at a, at a level that would, that would lead to our, you know, lead to more resilient forests and, and protect communities, uh, in, in a rapid fashion. So this wildfire crisis strategy money is tied to wooie and community protection. Um, so, so that's part of it, right? Like I need to be focused around communities. So roads and ridges around communities, addressing the fuels in plantations and, um, increasing forest resiliency. Uh, if anything, Tom, I would say that the pilot project was the, the first stepping stone. And I would even go so far as say the cornerstone in how we, how we have been developing these projects as we go. Um, and I'll even go one further that, so we, you guys, we took pilot and then we did High and Palm, and our partners with the watershed center went out and competed for money that would treat the roads in between those two projects and connect those on a landscape level that will make all of those individual treatments that much more effective. And they, they were able to, you know, factor in private land that, that we couldn't have done on our own. So, um, it's, it's not exactly, you know, a thousand miles a year for, or about, I, I can't even do that now. Thousand miles would be a long way. Uh, it's not three thousand acres a year for ten years. It's more than that, but if I'm doing my job right, you should recognize those roads, those ridges and those plantations in every single project we do. Um, because it's in Big Ranch, it's certainly in High and Palm. It's in the North Trinity County project they're working on along Highway Three. It's in that fuel break that, uh, SPI and the Forest Service had from the deep fire that's being continued on that ridge line. Um, but if that's, that, maybe that's a good, a good topic for our next field trip. I'm, I'm certainly, uh, open. I want to hear what you guys think and, but that's what I've been trying to do with what I've learned from all of you, if that makes sense.
All right, we've got a question from Bob. Bob, go ahead.
I agree. That was a great question from Tom and, uh, I appreciate your answer to that, Tara. Um, something specific on pilot. You're talking about non-merch chipping and possibly wheel brater. We found that wasn't profitable in the community forest. Wouldn't pay its way out of the woods. I don't know how it's going to pay its way from the distance that. It's going to have to be subsidized, obviously. So on what I'm wondering, bottom line, the curtain burner that we took the field trip to Mad River to see that we were so impressed with, if that could be a better answer than hauling to wheel brater, it'd be a much smaller carbon footprint, I believe, and, um, possibly costless.
So, uh, well, for one, I'd have to pry it out of Kristen's hands. Um, but, uh, for the scale of work that we're trying to do, um, it, I think that would be a challenge. It's, I think it's very effective. It's not necessarily very fast. One of the things that's changed recently is there's a pilot program out there that, um, uh, purchasers like, and you can, there was a really great presentation from, uh, uh, Zane Peterson with Peterson, uh, logging. So there is a program that they can get subsidies to for extended haul. So you're exactly right. The, the math doesn't pencil out if you're trying to just haul biomass from the west side to wheel brater. But with that pilot program that's been extended for, for, uh, I think five years, it starts to, it starts to get a lot better. And then if we decide that removing the fuel from the landscape is a priority, then we're leveraging some of the value of the timber to get that work done. You know, we're not, pilot isn't like, oh, let's, let's go make a bunch of money off of timber. That's not what that project is about. So we're going to look to leverage the value of some of that timber to pay for the removal of some of that, um, non-merchable material. But I, I agree with you that, um, air curtain burner is a, is a good, is a good tool. Um, and I know Kristen's putting it to good use.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Jerry.
Yep.
Right. So I was an ex-smoke jumper. So I'm really into having them be first responders. And if we need more money and planes so they can come out, I mean, we can hold, kind of on the size of the plane, fifteen, sixteen hours at a time. And two or three more planes, we just put that more people on the ground so they can go on each side. We take half of the kill. And we just go down and, and fire off. Burn. That's mainly in the primitive area, but now you want it to burn, but it's fine, but at least use them in the areas where we first started, get them on, on the, from the air, started on the fire. While that ground crew tries to come uphill, you know.
Absolutely. Um, the smoke jumpers were, uh, really, 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 um, critical to the work of the deep fire last year. Um, they kind of locked into that Stewart's Fork Trail. Um, and normally they're like in and then they leave and, and, uh, they, they stayed. Um, and, um, the, the smoke jumper was the, I see that fire for the whole time. We got the pack stock supporting them. So, um, you're, you're a hundred percent right. And one of the things I, you know, one of the reasons we have not been successful in fire suppression is because we haven't come back in and cleaned up the woods post-fire. You know, when we go out on our field trips and you look out and it's nothing but brush and snags, I can't, I can't put somebody's son or daughter in there and ask them to try to be successful because they can't. And so that's why these larger projects that do the, the restoration, the fuels reduction, um, especially when it's strategic and close to communities are so, that, that work is just so important. Then, then our firefighters can have a better chance of getting in there and being successful.
All right, Larry. We'll get to you, Jerry, next.
Yeah, so, um, I want to drill down on, on the, the part of what the pilot project was about was pace and scale. So we, we had the three hundred or three thousand acres a year because we just wanted work to get done along the roadside. Now, then immediately, early on, the finger pointing between Fish and Wildlife and Forest Service started. And as far as I can tell, it's still going on because I've talked to Fish and Wildlife about how they felt about Big Ranch and they had all kinds of problems with Big Ranch. So I don't think we've managed to sidestep that problem. So I guess my question is, whichever approach we take, whether we're sticking to the roadsides or we're going to these big landscape projects, is the pace and scale of what we wanted to get done going to really happen?
So I would say, yes. So one of the ways, Larry, that, um, I, I agree, one of our problems was, uh, our, the level, level of, uh, communication, cooperation, collaboration with Fish and Wildlife Service. So for the High and Palm project, we had them, uh, come out to the site. Um, they are part, they are on every one of our IDT meetings. Um, we, I've had, this week alone, I have learned, I've had three meetings that I've been a part of with the Fish and Wildlife Service to make sure as we're, as we're getting ready to finalize, um, the draft of our BA that we're all speaking the same language, that we're factoring in the, the important impacts that we're, where we have treatments that are responsible that won't, um, adversely, uh, impact, um, owls. And so I'm really looking to stay in that sweet spot that, um, you know, some short-term impacts, but, but no, I am not looking to, uh, do any downgrade of any habitat. So that's, I'm making sure as we work through this that we're staying in that sweet spot, that we're addressing fuels and, and not, not doing things that are going to be detrimental to the owls. And so far, just like most of our field trips, we're, we're, there's a lot more that we have in common and there's just some, a few things we gotta really work through, get down the weeds and get through. And, and those, those meetings are going very, very well.
So do we think we're going to start seeing close to three thousand acres a year, uh, being accomplished?
All right, all right. So Larry, do you mean accomplished, implemented or accomplished plan?
Accomplished, implemented.
Um, yes. Uh, you know, the timber sale pieces is out of my hands, but I can tell you for the planning piece, we scoped High and Palm in, um, September. And I expect to be, it's twelve thousand five hundred acres. I expect to be signing it by June. So that's what, about a nine-month window for twelve thousand five hundred acres. Um, so, so that, that's the planning piece. The implementation piece, um, because of the funding, I expect that, well, I expect all of pilot will go into a contract. Um, and we've already done, if you conclude prescribed fire, we've already exceeded what we did last year in the whole year. So we're, we're going to be twenty-four, twenty-five hundred acres just in prescribed fire. Um, so yes, I think, and I think you should hold me accountable. If I don't, if I'm not blowing three thousand acres, we're not going by that and exceeding that, you absolutely should hold me accountable for that. And I, and I know you will. Um, I expect to be, to address the problems we're facing, I, I need to be doing a lot more than three thousand acres per year, in my opinion.
So I understand that the timber companies, when they bid on one of these sales, they get up to five years to do it. And we've seen how that plays out. Now, that's fine. I understand, you know, they have to, they have to plan it out ahead of time where they're going to have their crews and, and all that. So that makes sense, but what I don't want to see happening is extensions on that five years. Because that's the other thing we've seen happen.
Yep. So I'm glad you brought that up. Um, so some of the things are, this is like the Tara Hour. This little computer is going to have nothing but Tara, like for, for pages. So when we put a contract together, it's the, a length of the contract, uh, term is based on the amount of volume that we put, that we put into it, right? So if you put fifteen million board feet in a contract, we can't make the contract, uh, period be two years because that's more than they could do, especially with LOPs. So I, because I, you know, I pay attention when we go on these field trips, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. So I'm going to be having some smaller timber sales that can be done in a shorter amount of time. But you should know that some of the, um, some of the contract additional time, Larry, is, is, um, they're entitled to that by law. It's related to how many times has the market shown, uh, uh, been down, had a downward um, impact and it's, uh, market-related contract term addition. It's, it's guaranteed under the CFRs. And the same thing if, uh, if, uh, if I had a timber sale contract with, uh, we'll say SPI and they didn't, they didn't harvest a green timber sale because they were taking in, uh, fire salvage because it deteriorates. The, it's also in the CFRs that they're entitled to additional contract time. There are some limits, like you can't, you shouldn't, I think we can't exceed twice the original term of the contract. So to me, what exactly you're talking about, I'm trying to have more contracts that are smaller, so they don't get extended out quite so far. I think there's a limit to, it can't be double what, what we originally offered. So if I had a two-year contract term, I should be locked in at four. I can't go any further than four generally. Um, but I want to, I do want to get it done too. Also, we can set some, um, priority units if it's like, hey, these units, um, we did that in Mount Shasta. There were some plantations right up against Mount Shasta. And so in the contract we built it, we said, hey, this, this has to be the first unit we do and it needs to be done the first year. So we can, if there's some really specific areas we need to get done first, I can, I can build that into the contract with, uh, with the purchaser. Those are great questions, Larry. It's like you, you've been, been waiting for, uh, to get to this point that we're talking about doing.
So Jerry's been, Jerry's been very patient. Uh, let's get to Jerry next. Jerry?
Thanks. Um, two questions. The first one, I'm going to kind of ride the same horse as Tom and Larry. Um, I think what I teased out of your, what you were talking about with Fish and Wildlife is that the original concept of learning from the first pilot project and then replicating it and kind of putting it on different linear features is not possible now because Fish and Wildlife um, won't allow it or throws barriers in there. So you're incorporating, incorporating that pattern into larger landscape projects?
So yes, I won't, I'm not saying it's not possible at all. That's not what I'm saying. But what I am saying is the, the roadside treatment to be effective, um, based on the pilot prescription, you, you really want to open it up. It's only a hundred and fifty feet and that's kind of what we looked at, right? It's a hundred and fifty feet on each side of the road. It's not very far. Um, but when fishing, but when the Fish and Wildlife Service does an analysis, they, then, they only analyze the treatment area. So if you have a fairly impactful treatment, even though it's only a hundred and fifty feet, it doesn't matter what's on the other side of that hundred and fifty feet. So say that we open the, let's just say sixty percent. We, we decide we're going to implement this prescription that opens this a little corridor up to six, down, take down a sixty percent canopy, then that's all they're going to look at. And it doesn't matter that right behind that hundred and fifty feet is another, it, it's seventy, eighty percent canopy. So it, it's not impossible, but it was definitely difficult to work through some of that. And, um, and I'm, I'm sure Kristen got through it. I, I know she got through it more easily than, than the Shasta Trinity did. And that is not the only reason, um, that the pilot had, had issues. It is just one of the reasons because the treatment is so, has some intensity in, in a very focused area. And in general, linear features are difficult. Um, they're just, they're just hard. I, uh, it's not, it's not impossible. Um, and so the way that I've found that I feel like will be the most successful is to incorporate that into these larger treatment areas. Um, and that seems to be, seems to be working out, um, with High and Palm as kind of the, if, if pilot was the, the first step, here's, here's, you know, in High and Palm, you should still see pilot in there. Uh, that seems to be going well, but I, I am not at all saying it's impossible. And I'm not saying the Fish and Wildlife Service made pilot harder or more difficult. Um, I'm just saying that they can only look at the area of, of treatment. So that, that, that in itself made it more complicated.
Thank you, Tara. Uh, we do have a note in the chat room here. Let me read this real quick from Kristen. Tara makes an important point. It is not the size of the project, but the effects of the NSO NRF habitat and how well that the termination is supported by the rationale prepared by the Forest Service Wildlife Biologist, length of timber sale contract is not given. Yeah. Okay. Wow, we are.
So, so I just, I want to kind of go back.
Um, okay.
So because the, uh, treatment area is so narrow, which we thought would facilitate movement of projects, you're saying that impedes uh, moving forward with the linear feature. Is that right?
Tara, can I, can I jump in and give you a hand there, girlfriend?
They should take needle lungs after them. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good. Um, so to, to qualify my statement in there, so NSO is shorthand for Northern Spotted Owl. Hopefully, a lot of you already know that. And NERF habitat is nesting, roosting, foraging. So it's not so much the size of the project, but it's the location of the project and where our treatment units fall within that designated habitat. So we have a lot more constraints on us if we identified, uh, treatment units in, um, nesting and roosting habitat. That's where you see that sixty percent can, retention and canopy that is, um, pretty much prescriptive by the service. Um, we can go down to forty percent in foraging. And then plantations are the foresters' playground. That's not considered habitat. And so we can do what we want in plantation. So.
Oh my gosh, please come back.
Did we lose you, Kristen? It appears like we lost you.
So while, while we're waiting for her to come back, uh, my second question, which is.
Sort of our gold standard there, that we are all turn our wildlife biologists in their analysis.
Back, Jerry. Yeah. Kristen, you there?
Okay, that was weird. Just got kicked off there. So, okay, I'm back. So that determination is made by the Forest Service Wildlife Biologist and then they advocate and basically defend um, that to the, their counterpart at Fish and Wildlife Service through those Level One meetings. And as Tara pointed out, our relationship, so we do have two different offices. I work with the Arcade Office. She's the Wybrica Office. Um, so we do have different relationships there, but, um, typically we now, um, more than ever have been engaging their staff in the field, in the developmental part of these projects so that we're bringing them along with us. So again, it's not necessarily the size of the project. It's the location and the effects that they're going to see on that habitat. So we have polygons of habitat. of habitat across the landscape that says, this is foraging habitat. This is nesting, roosting habitat. And whether or not they're deficit in those characteristics. So there's a whole bunch of calculations that go on that the wildlife biologist has to do. If you have a unit laid out in a piece of habitat that's highly deficient, and now you're going to take it down even lower below those, those calculated numbers, then you really have a hard time making the argument that it's beneficial treatment. So if you can grab, if you can make your unit where it maybe grabs some other habitat that actually isn't deficient, and so a bigger unit, you're not in a linear, you've gone to that stand that Tara mentioned where you've got good habitat, and you're going to treat it to those specifications, then you have, both have your numbers work. And you have your wildlife biologist come up with the rationale of why this treatment is a may affect, not likely to adversely affect. And so that is where location, 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 and making sure that your treatments um, are going, are, are thoughtful, not just throw a buffer down on a map, but an iterative process with the wildlife habitat there, that's there. And that's just one species. And so through time, just like us, the service also changes. There's new uh, best available science. There's new requirements. We've got what's coming in now, the monarch butterfly and, you know, we just had the and, and there's a frog or a toad or a turtle or something else. I can't remember that's coming along. And so we're constantly having to uh, adapt to that. Furthermore, on our side, now we've got climate change calculations we have to do and potential, well, depending on the project, old growth um, analysis that has to happen as well. So those are all new things that add to the timeframe. So for us, the way we craft and build our projects um, are really important. For example, one way I'm going to deal with this new requirement for old growth is I'm going to make sure that we're doing stand exams. And I have stratified my stance to show that we're in um, early, you know, early mature and mid mature. I, I'm not going to go into any late serial stands. Um, well, I shouldn't say that. I will. But I, it's going to be thoughtful about it and where it's going to be, and it needs to meet, meet a need. And that's completely different from the L S R. Um, uh, a, assessments and um, consultation process that we have to go through as well. So it, you know, building a good project upfront where we can streamline some of the processes that are already in place, where we can use our programmatic B A B E that we have with the service to, to streamline things. Um, using some of the emergency action determinations that are now available to us to, you know, um, streamline further, um, are all important things. And so um, there's, there's sort of a tipping point for, you know, for the size of the projects, Tara, with what she has in, in her landscape, um, and her needs have, has some much larger projects than what uh, the Mad River Ranger District is developing, you know, and so um, I think that they all go hand in hand. So there's not a real simple answer to the consultation process that we have with any of the services, whether it's NOAA Fisheries, the Water Board, or Fish and Wildlife Service. Um, but it is a continued relationship. Um, and a crafting and refining of our projects as, as we go along. So hopefully that helped give a little bit more information on how that process worked.
Thank you very much, Kristen. Jerry, did you have another question?
I did a short one, Tara, easy. The new monies that came in, the thirty million or so, was there, is there any possibility that any of that can be used for equipment purchase? Kind of, um, you know, just tagging on to Bob's question about the burner.
Yeah, so um, well, yes and no. We uh, on the west.
Yes, it wasn't a simple question.
Yeah, I see.
It's a simple question.
Uh, so we, we um, we are working on buying a, a skid steer shearer um, for um, for the uh, for the west side. Um, that, that was different money. Um, but we also uh, got a, a masticator, a large masticator from the east side of our forest and we, they were going to like get rid of it and we, we begged for it. So we'll use some of this money, Jerry, to pay for the upkeep and maintenance and, and transport of that masticator. So I am really thrilled that we have picked up, um, we have already picked up one piece of equipment. And then we used um, uh, some, I think it was the flat fire settlement to, to purchase the skids, the, this little masticator uh, that will be equipment on our side. So uh, uh, mostly they want to see us investing in partners and implementing things on the ground. Um, so that's kind of how I, I use some different money to, to buy a piece of equipment. And then um, I'll use the, the landscape money to, to maintain uh, the piece of equipment that we got.
I understand. So it's easier for the contractors that you work with to actually do the purchasing and the ownership of. Yeah.
Yeah. And I think, um, and our partners are definitely gearing up and they're, they're getting, you know, they're still mostly dealing with saws and, but they're looking to, to add subcontractors to their, to their uh, their list of capabilities as well.
Okay, so an important topic, but I think we're gonna, we're gonna bring that one to closure. Uh, just a time check, we are at noon. You've seen on the agenda, we've uh, pushed it out a little bit this meeting to twelve fifteen, so we got fifteen minutes left in our meeting.
Isn't V L M, isn't Jen Sawn her? Did she give up?
I think she gave up, yeah.
Jen said she had to jump out.
So Tara, do you have any more for us?
Oh, gosh, um. No, but I, I, you know, Larry and uh, uh, everyone, um, you know, when Kristen and I went out and looked at, we've been looking at that South Fork Mountain fuel break. And um, it's like the, you know, that route one is a main route. It's a great place to have a fuel break. Um, we have a C E that lets us go a, a thousand feet off of a road. And the ridge line is about fifteen hundred feet. So it, I, you know, you know what happened if, how dumb it would be if we went out there and just, just used a C E category and it's one of those random, why did the forest service stop here moments? And so Kristen and I talked about it and it's like, let's, let's do the right thing. Um, and so that, that's going to be bigger than that. So I'm done. I'm, I'm out of words. Somebody owes me lunch. I don't know who.
I was going to give you a break. All right, Todd, do you have anything else for us on, on the NRA? You still with us?
I am. Yeah, I've got a, I've got a couple of updates for a couple of our projects. I know we're running behind, so I can, I can be brief.
Okay.
Um, quick overview. So yeah, Trinity Camps is our current, you know, project we're in the planning stage on. Um, we're getting close to wrapping up the, the NEPA on that. The section one oh six, which is the archaeology stuff um, is complete. The Endangered Species Act, section seven consultation is complete. Um, there was a new kind of Forest Service policy on old growth that we had to kind of navigate last minute, but we, we got through that process that went all the way up to the Washington office and were um, that has been approved for the Trinity Camps project. So we're through that hurdle. Um, there is about a hundred and fifty acres uh, that's out near Hayward Flat Campground that's got a sample mark. So people want to kind of see the, the treatment prescription like in the real world, you know, the, the trees with blue paint on them are going to be the, the cut trees. So um, as that area becomes accessible, I think the gate might still be locked. So um, to that campground, but that should be open soon that uh, people can actually go in there and, and look and see what this is actually going to look like on the ground. So um, as far as order of treatment, the priorities are going to be around, uh, you know, human health and safety and, and where we're seeing the focus mortality. So that the first timber sales we're, we're wanting to offer probably going to be in the Ridgeville, that area surrounding the Ridgeville community. Um, the area to the north of the Trinity Center Airport and Hayward Flat Campground. And we're also trying to balance, you know, not having multiple uh, you know, high use campgrounds closed in the same rec season. So, you know, Tannery, Bushy Tail. Um, Hayward Flat, not having, you know, two or three of those closed in the same season. So Hayward Flat will probably be the, the first one. And go from there. So and as far as the timeline, we are expecting a NEPA decision um, in late April. So that's where we're at with Trinity Camps. Um, real quick on the Trinity Center Airport. So there are, you know, a bunch of hazard trees, you know, flight hazards on the north side of the runway that are going to be um, addressed in the, in the Trinity Camps project. And then there's some additional trees kind of on the southeast side around the hangar. Um, that are going to be um, our foresters working with David Colbeck with the county to, to get a final proposal for those. And, and our plan is that the forest will issue a letter to just authorize that work. So that's in the works too. And then our um, large kind of next, next planning project is that uh, North Trinity County Community Risk Reduction Project. Some folks have referred to this as Highway Three, but it kind of follows that Highway Three uh, corridor. That project is in the early stages of development. You know, we did, um, we're able to look at that a little bit in the, the December field trip. Um, that looked at, at Bowerman also. So I appreciate the, the partition, participation and feedback we got on that field trip. And we do plan um, to have some additional field trips out to that project area as, you know, spring comes along. So those aren't, the dates aren't set yet, but just uh, expect those to be um, upcoming. And we'll get to the, the dates on those as we get those set. Um, yeah, just appreciate the ability to get that early, early input as we're, you know, drafting that project. Um, staffing, no new, no new permanent hires. We do have two uh, four month detail folks. So Joe Stubenick, who's been our recreation uh, program manager is going to be the in a new position that's basically going to have oversight over recreation, special uses, fiscal. Um, so that's going to be for the next four months. And then uh, Tim Ritchie, who's a fuels officer over for, for Tara is going to come over and help us, us out with our um, district fire management officers uh, on a detail at our supervisor's office. So playing musical chairs there a little bit, but um, so Tim's going to come over and help us out. So if there's any questions, I can, any of that, I know that was quick.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions for Tom? Not seeing any. Thank you very much. All right, Kristen, Chris Rivers report.
Okay. I'll keep it short because Tara pretty much already said everything. So she made it easy for me.
Kelly, I'm not going first next time.
Anyway, um, so I'll just real quick, um, she mentioned this, the South Fork Mountain um, project. And so we're, we're going to be having a um, I D T meeting here within the next couple of weeks. I'm finalizing the pill. Um, it's a, a joint project, you know, as we've discussed. Um, but I'm taking on the, basically the line officer of record for this, for Tara, uh, for both of us. So um, I'll, I'll be doing that. Um, you know, the majority of the joint work between the two forests is going to be there. That's our, our um, our property boundary with each other. And so, you know, the project work with, that we do along there is, you know, that'll be the bulk of that, that cross boundary work with Mad River. Of course, Tara has cross boundary with the Lower Trinity Ranger District also for some projects there. So um, that's a big one. Um, the other one that's going along is the County Road Hazard Tree Abatement. And so a big thank you to the R C D, um, Bethany Llewellyn especially has worked hard on that. And then David Colback uh, with the county as well. And so um, that is my first use of the new Trinity County Good Neighbor Authority Agreement that Tara put together. And so um, that, that's been exciting. So basically, um, we, we got through the NEPA clearance by using the existing August Complex E A that um, my district signed, Ted signed. Um, and then the um, some specialist work needed to occur because we didn't survey everywhere. So we had to get some, some heritage and botany for the most part surveys um, done. So that is um, in the hands of the county. It's those county roads is, you know, their resource. They know how best to protect it and what their criteria is. And so I basically handed that over to David to just tell me what you need to do and we'll pay for it. And so make, makes that pretty simple. Um, so those, those are the two things that are going on right now that are, you know, in those overlapping landscapes. Um, you know, the other two projects I'm working on are in Humboldt County, but they are in the Trinity Landscape, and that's the Rat Tail and Buck Tail Projects. Rat Tail, we're having an I D T meeting on Monday, getting very close to signature, using the Western Fire Shed Emergency Authority um, to preclude the objection period on that. Um, and so that, you know, that is in the landscape. And so that's where some of the, the funding that we're getting for the landscape are going to those projects as well. So um, just thought I would mention that. Um, and then the funding, working very closely with our partners to get our funding obligated. Um, the Joint Chiefs funding, our portion of it. We have, I have the um, the August I R S C, the Integrated Resource Service Contract that's been going on. That, that was that last year, that eighteen million dollar award that was almost split evenly, not, not quite. Um, on the area base with Bamford and the roadside stuff with Kaiser. I've, it took a million dollars of that Joint Chiefs and funded um, additional roadside work that, that was awarded to Kaiser but not funded. And we're focusing that on the thirty route, um, that ingress, egress and around where we're going to be doing some major road repairs. There was that slide on the thirty road. So kind of concentrating our efforts there. And then reforestation in, with the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. Um, their C C I grant is also going to be starting here, probably in April. We're supposed to get our trees here pretty soon. And we'll, we'll be doing some tree planting up in those units that we treated under that. Um, so that was the, the Joint Chiefs. Tara mentioned the field trip that's coming up in the second week of June. And so Tara and I are on point for um, getting that together, that's the three days of looking at our projects. Um, so that's important. The um, the Earl or the landscape funding that we got, um, a majority of that I'm putting in agreement with the Watership Center across those three projects, Rat Tail, Buck Tail and South Fork Mountain. Um, they have additional NEPA skill sets that they can help offer with, say, writer, editor and some admin stuff. So looking at that. Um, I understand that there's going to be expanded capacity with them for um, road, not engineer, but road technician type stuff to help us. You know, the road packages are always a big stumbling block. That's some specialized skills and abilities there that um, we're kind of lean on in the Forest Service. Um, so the, some help there. So that's going on. And then um, the other thing I wanted to mention, some of you may know that Nancy Curran is just a few weeks away from retiring. And so um, she is going to be um, freelancing or working with our partners to be able to be hired by them to be able to continue working with us. So um, I'm, I'm happy about that. And on March twenty sixth, I'm hosting the Forest Leadership Team Meeting out at the district. But we're going to have a little retirement lunch for her on Tuesday, March twenty sixth in Mad River at the Community Hall from noon to one thirty. So if any of you guys are in the neighborhood and you want to pop in for that, please let me know, our S V P, because we're um, kind of doing a head count. I'm worried that we're not going to have enough food. We're going to barbecue. So just give me a heads up if you, if any of you want to come over for that, for that, you know, hour and a half. Um, Ted will be there. You know, the F L T folks, leadership team will be there. And um, yeah, so I think that's the highlights. So.
All right. Thank you, Kristen. Any questions for Kristen? Looks like she might have frozen once again. I'm not sure. You still hear us, Kristen? You may have lost her, so. Doesn't appear like we have any questions. So thank you again, Kristen, if you can hear me. Okay.
Do you want to give Chris Cole a chance to?
Sure. There she is.
So I don't know what's happening. It's just disconnecting. So were, were there any questions?
I'm not seeing any, Kristen.
Okay. Well, you know where to find.
Yeah, uh, this is Kenneth. Could you repeat uh, the time uh, and place of Nancy's retirement?
Um, yeah, I'll do that. And then I'll send the flyer to Kelly.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that. But Tuesday, March twenty sixth, so net, not this coming week, the next week. And it's going to be at the Mad River Community Hall, which is on the Van Duzen Road. They're just across the street from the school, basically. And uh, noon to one thirty. And noon to one thirty.
All right. Thank you. So Jennifer Monta did have to move on. She had another engagement at noon.
I had a question for Kristen Lark.
Oh, okay, Larry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Kristen, are you going to use the collaborative white paper prescription for the South Fork Mountain Project? Or is this going to be some new?
Well, you know, I think we've refined tha- that prescription, right? We've used various iterations of it based on what the stand needs. So taking into account the, you know, I talked a little bit about our consultation process with the, our regulatory agencies, keeping that in mind. Not being hamstrung by a certain width, you know, some of our CE categories are really good at what they do. But does it get us to where we want to be? So those, we're, we're still getting the, the layout going for that. There's a lot of it that's in the burned area. If you go south of Highway thirty six out to the thirty road out past Cedar Gap, you know, I don't have much green timber in there. It's going to be kind of that boilerplate cookie cutter type of fuels reduction stuff. There's only so much you can do. We have an opportunity for a little bit more green timber and a timber sale on the four and twelve, you know, where Tara has already done some work with the West Side Plantation and those sort of areas there. So, you know, I think the, that white paper is a good foundation and has good concepts in it. And I think we need to take that and look at each piece of ground and have the silviculturist or the fuels person or the forester, you know, come up with those, those prescriptions. But it none, none of our prescriptions really stray very far from what we consistently do.
So I guess to be more specific, are we still going to use shade as our friend upon South Fork? You're going to leave the, the biggest, healthiest trees?
Well, we, it depends where we are because a, a lot of those areas that got hammered in the August or the three dash nine fire, there is no shade.
Yeah, obviously, I'm not talking about places where there's no shade, but I'm, I'm talking about when the green stands that are still there and there's still a lot.
So we're treating stands to develop their cereal characteristics. We want our early and mid mature stands to develop into suitable habitat, late cereal characteristics and meet those goals as well. And so there's always going to be shade there. The, the roadside stuff, you know, we can graduate or feather in treatments too. We can be less intensive or more intensive, you know, next to the road. Typically, our firefighters want to see a little bit more intensive treatments right next to the, the road, especially for those downed fuels as, you know, to, to get stuff cleared out, not to have a lot of slash there. So, you know, I like having the option of treating the stand as it needs to be treated in order to get to our desired future condition.
So since Tara's handed this off, I guess to you, are we still going to have field trips before this gets the cake gets baked? Or are we going to only see the end product?
Oh, well, yeah. So it's cross boundary. So we have specialists from both sides, you know, working on this. And then the landscape staff that was hired as well is also working on it. So I'm not going to make any independent decisions that, with, you know, without talking to Tara and saying, hey, this is what we're doing. So just, I'm just taking the responsibility of signing the pill and giving that leader's intent and, you know, being that conduit to Tara. So yeah, we can have field trips. You know, we did one already, the one that we did earlier when we went up and looked at the three dash nine fire. So we had that. It was, you know, we're, now we're actually making this a bigger project. And including upfront in phase one, something that I was thinking might have been phase two, which is south of, of the highway. And a lot of that has to do with our color of money. You know, we have money with, in agreement with NCRC to do surveys that came from disaster funding. And so that's the other wrinkle with everything that Tara and I have to do is we have to make sure that we're spending the right money on that right footprint. Both on people's time and with our partners and what their work is doing, and then tracking those accomplishments back to those, that color of money. And so that, you know, that adds more to the, the thought process there.
All right. Well, I look forward to talking with you more out in the field about it.
Okay, great, Larry.
Okay, Kristen, thank you very much. Doesn't look like there's any other questions for Kristen. So we're going to move on. We, as I mentioned, we will not have a BLM update. I believe Jennifer's going to get something out to us via email. So I imagine we can get that out and share it with everyone. Didn't want to give opportunity, Chris. Do you want to give a brief NRCS report at this time?
Yeah, I can do a brief thing. I don't know. Some of it's not a little less relevant to the group, but we got ten contracts that are up for, I guess, approval with the state for funding. So we're awaiting that. And then we, we do have a position open that hasn't happened in a long time for a GS nine or eleven planner. So that's a, a new, new opportunity with NRCS that I don't think has been available for probably last eight years or so. So if you know people who are qualified and interested in working for NRCS, there is a position that will, is likely going to fly in the next couple of weeks. So.
Very good. Any, any questions for Chris?
Also, Chris will be playing a role in the Joint Chiefs Field Trip, a big role. He's involved with NRCS.
Great. Okay, thanks, Chris. All right, partner updates. Rec Committee, I think we covered a couple of the big hitters on the Rec Committee. Anybody else? I know Carol's gone. Anything else from the Rec Committee? Not seeing any. Kelly, RCD?
Okay, I know that Watershed Center doesn't have representation today, so I will add a couple of little things that we're sort of partnering with them specifically on. The Watershed Center is going after a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation ask. We may have talked about it previously. It's a fairly significant, a nine million dollar ask for the opportunity, nine and a half million dollar ask for the opportunity. Mostly doing roads and fuels type reduction work, as I think the basis of that funding is largely disaster relief funding. Being funneled through NFW. As a, as a sort of a match to that, we've put in a Cal Fire Forest Health ask for about six million dollars to help assist with service work in the Bowerman Ridge Project. As it's not anticipated to have enough retained receipts to be able to do all the work that we want to do up there. So we're asking for some funds to do that work as well. As well as roadside along private lands. We had a Sierra Nevada Conservancy ask that we put out that didn't, wasn't funded. So we're, we're going after Cal Fire funding for that potential ask. And there's another piece to that that I don't remember off the top of my head, but with regard to North Lake, we anticipate having the NEPA completed. We anticipate FEMA having completed the NEPA for our North Lake. FEMA ask that we're, that we're partnering on the McConnell Foundation with, which is a ten million, million dollar project. We anticipate that NEPA being completed with surveys and, and unit delineation starting this summer. So that's pretty exciting. That also has some treatment over here on the east side of the Weaver, the Weaverville Basin as part of that project. Let's see, I went on a two, a two, well, I went on a field trip with the BLM forester and the, and a representative from the Trinity River Lumber Company within the Weaverville Community Forest on the BLM side for approximately one hundred and twenty acres of, of green timber sale. That's already been marked out. It's, the NEPA was completed by BLM about a year ago. A little later in twenty twenty-three. The rep from Trinity River Lumber was very impressed with how that's, that mark came out. And Jess, the, the forester from BLM indicated that there was about a million more feet in that sale. And the rep Taylor Geist, who's been on a number of our field tours and represented the Trinity River Lumber Company at with the Collaborative, stated that they think it looks great. They want to go ahead and move forward with purchasing the sale. And we'll be working with them and getting our LTO lined out, our, our log, so our loggers, our truckers. And, and everything else sort of prepped for that sale with the intention that that will be, that operations will begin probably by June of this year. So that's pretty exciting. So there, we are anticipating with the numbers that they, preliminary numbers that they were giving us that will have some retained receipts. So we'll be able to do some service work in there. After the, the actual operations are completed. And let's see. We also have been approached by Caltrans to do some mitigation work within the Monument Fire Footprint, doing roads related sediment source reduction up to a hundred and, I think, forty-seven miles on Forest Service roads within the Monument Fire Complex. So this is all new and really fast. And I don't have a chance to really talk with you about that, Tara, yet. But they're moving forward with it. It's a mitigation thing. They approached us. It's, we get a proposal. But it, they're basically sort of a slam dunk. So it's, it's about a million dollars with roadwork within, within the Monument Fire Complex. So that's moving forward. And Cynthia's already been talking with all the engineers.
Because that, the only concern I have is that we have about eighteen million dollar proposal to, to fix the sixty sixteen and the forty seven.
Okay, I, none of it is going to be on paved roads.
Okay.
So, so I don't think we have any conflicts there. So that was, I think, outside of that, we have hired on our remaining two crews for us, I mean, for fuels reduction. They've been up working on the community forest with Tim Ritchie here in the basin at low elevation, doing a lot of cutting and piling and prepping for some burning. We did our first successful private burning on Brown's Mountain Ridge on some private property up there that ties in a couple of BLM pieces that we'll, I think, also be working on. We're hiring up our forestry tech crews, which will be doing a lot of this work on the McConnell Foundation FEMA funded project, as well as a, a number of projects with the Forest Service. And what else? I don't know. Those, I think those are the big ticket items since we're away this week.
Thank you, Kelly.
A lot, a lot going on. And, and we're hiring up for, you know, additional capacity with regard to partnering with things of that nature. We had some opportunities to hire in that into positions that will, I think, be able to help us support those efforts as we move forward.
Fantastic.
So I think that's, that's it from RCD. So.
Very good. Any questions for Kelly? Not seeing any. And again, we don't have any Watershed Research Training Center folks. Okay. Okay, concluding business, anything from the facilitation team?
No, nothing that's been, that hasn't already been touched on.
Yep. April nineteenth, field tour planning. Any ideas?
Oh.
Recommendations?
I'll get with, I'll get with everybody.
Okay. Tara will follow up.
What was eight, April? I do have one thing that the, if the group could consider. You know, I was kind of joking earlier when I talked about, you know, our, our contribution from the west side of the show, it used to be an update on pilot, an update on pilot, update on pilot. So we could do that really quickly. There is so much going on, on, on just my unit that I, I don't, I don't want to give you too much information and I don't want to blow through it. I could, I could have, well, except they stole Tim Ritchie. I could sit with Tim Ritchie and show, and go over everything we're implementing, you know, what we're planning, all of those things I, I could really get in the weeds. But so I, I guess what I'm asking this group is to think about, is this, what do you want from me in this meeting? Do you need less is more? Or does this group want to really know what we're doing? And if so, I feel like for BLM got punished because they had to sit through, you know, so much going on here. Is there maybe, is this structure still going to work for the amount of work that's going on on the west side now? And that's a question for your group. I'm going to do whatever you need me to do or want me to do, but that's just a question.
One comment that I have about the BLM update is that we used to bounce that back and forth. So we can, we can push that up the agenda so that Jen will get caught in, you know, in a, in time crunch. So we can, we can address that piece. But I think that's a solid question. Let's see Larry's hands up. Larry?
Yeah, I, I think that maybe bifurcate it, like you do the oral presentation at the meeting for the big, the big stuff. And then maybe include a written report of all the rest of it, because I would like to know all that stuff, but I don't want everybody at the meeting to have to sit through all of it.
Harry, you said that you produce, you produce like on a monthly basis, a report for the Board of Supervisors, correct? If you wanted to provide that to me, then I can get that out to the group easily enough.
Okay.
I mean, that'd be one way to simplify your workload a little bit.
And again, absolutely. And again, I'm willing to sit here and answer whatever questions you have because I, I get it. And, and things have changed dramatically just since the, the fires in twenty and twenty-one, right? And, and we went from, are we going to be able to do three thousand acres in a year to, I think we did three thousand acres. So in the fiscal year until we hit Christmas. So those are, I'm going to do whatever you guys need me to do. If we need to have a break in, in there for lunch. I'm never going first again, though. I will throw that out there.
The other thing I will remind everybody about was that these meetings used to be five hours.
Oh, okay.
They used to run from ten to three. Every couple of months. So with the Zoom thing, we've been trying to be respectful of people's patience and time. But, you know, we used to get a lot more of that, that level of detail and depth of conversation as we had today. In, in those longer format, in-person meetings.
But what Larry suggested is something we discussed at the last meeting. So, and it's kind of a mixed bag. There are some partners who, like Tara, already prepared a report, wouldn't be, you know, additional work or burden. Others have suggested, yeah, that might be a bar too high for me to reach to get a report to you before the meeting. Still, I think we left it last meeting. Those partners that are capable, willing and interested and think there's some value in providing something ahead of time, then we can get that out to everybody. And then, yeah, you hit the highlights just at the meeting, right?
Well, I think.
Orally, you know.
And I think this could be a way that the landscape team supports both Kristen and I.
Yep.
So that we can get you, you know, what's been implemented and then we can always speak to what, what we're working on.
Yep. Jerry, you got a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that back in the day of the five hour meetings, the morning meeting was really the forestry subgroup. And then after lunch or during lunch, then it was the full collaborative. They were pretty lengthy, tedious days.
All right.
That doesn't sound fun at all.
Yeah. And I'm just going to help move it on, on the agenda building I was going to bring up. Wasn't here for the camera talk, but could you put cameras on the agenda? And then do we need a subgroup meeting sooner at any time on cameras? Is there work to be done by the subgroup?
Well, you know, we, we kind of gave an update, Jerry. I don't know if you were on for that.
No, I, I wasn't. And that's why I was just wondering if we needed the ad hoc group to convene for anything.
I'll tell you what, I can provide you a summary on the comments we received when the scoping period ends, March thirtieth, Jerry. And that, then I should, at least on my, my piece, I'll know if the planning is going to go through smoothly. So, and I, probably the best thing we heard was at the end when he said, as soon as we get assigned, they're ready to go to work. So and I probably the best thing we heard was at the end when he said, as soon as we get assigned, they're ready to go to work. Would would that be beneficial? And maybe that can help you decide if you need to.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
But please include it on the next collaborative agenda.
Yeah, no, that's a standing agenda item, Jerry. So as long as, yeah, that that'll continue to be there until I guess we get them all in place.
It's off my plate, then then it'll be like, oh, yeah, that's great.
So any other agenda building items that anyone wants to bring forward at this time? Tara, it sounds like you wanted to kind of do a follow up on the five year.
Yeah.
Have some maps for us. So we'll have that.
Yeah.
Okay.
If if that's something the group wants to see, that might be too far into the weeds.
I think I've heard some comments that suggest there are some interest in what you're planning on doing.
Nobody's like, keep it brief, let's move on.
See, you have the long attitude.
Okay.
I'm not seeing any additional agenda items. But as is is our, you know, custom, we'll go through the minutes and pull out anything that was suggested throughout through the course of the meeting and and we'll make sure we get that on the next agenda. So I think we're about ready to wrap. Any any final comments, thoughts? Not seeing any. Thank you all again very much for your participation and patience today. Thank you. Have a great weekend.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.